No, no ground.
Good whenever you're ready.
Just wait for the man to sit down. Okay, I'll call the board of selectmen meeting to order for December eighth. I'll start off the meeting by apologizing if you can't hear the governor's orders. We are all required to wear a mask, even with just the business thing and the public graph. It is what it is. So roll call, Donald Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, and Phil Crossman is attending remotely. Andy Dorr, town manager, and Elizabeth Bonker, deputy town clerk, is taking minutes. Uh, approve agenda. Do we have any additions, attractions? I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? And Phil, Phil has raised his hand. Minutes, approved the minutes from the November tenth, twenty twenty meeting.
Just a couple of, um, for the record, just who voted on the executive session. Um, from the November tenth meeting.
Well, I know that I made the motion to come in and come out. And I cannot remember who seconded it. I believe Phil might have seconded both of them. I move we approve the minutes from the November tenth meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? And now, the November twenty fourth slash twenty seventh meeting.
I'll just do the same, so I don't have to be here right away. I wasn't there for the twenty seventh meeting.
I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? Okay, approved and signed treasurer's warrant number twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole again. All those in favor?
Have you got?
No, but I've signed. There are two warrants assigned. Uh, communications, main DMR, renewal of limited purpose agriculture licenses for twenty twenty-one.
I put the memo on the screen here. There are a handful of renewals, uh, so those numbers there correspond to what you can find on the state's website. And they have GIS map on there basically, so you can get the information off each of those sites. Um, but again, these are just the renewals.
Oh, so this is just for a one year renewal, not like a twenty year, right?
Yeah, I think all the LPAs are just the limited purpose, so they're just a shorter, shorter time period. Or you can get a ten year lease potentially on other types of projects.
Yeah, well, it's been a little something else, so I've been on it twenty years. I wasn't sure about if the one year, I'd be all right with it.
Those require an action, just letting the community know.
Okay. Speaker from the floor. Just gave him that.
Yeah, I, I, um, hi, um, I just wanted to say I'm obviously not on the agenda tonight for planning and community development, but that Matt and I will be, um, uh, bringing some stuff to share at the next meeting as well as some committee updates for you.
Okay, great.
And the sheriff is on as well to help, uh, just to go over the, any changes in the contract, the questions you might have in that. I guess I saw him on there earlier.
I am here.
Perfect. Thanks, Dan.
Great. Okay, committee and department reports and appointments. Appointment to the budget committee.
Uh, Erica Davis, I think we tried to do that last time and that was the meeting that we didn't have audios.
I move we appoint Erica Davis to the budget committee.
He's already on it? He was off the last year or something?
He didn't renew.
Okay, seconded by Pam Alley. All those in favor? Road commissioners report.
You see they covered up the gallon, didn't they?
Yeah.
They did. We do gotta just put a couple of vents, uh, holes preventing up towards the top there, but otherwise.
You don't think there's any holes in that wood anywhere that the man is getting out of there?
Uh, I took that sheet and that wrapped right, right up underneath the east there.
All they did, I lost it with the roof.
There's a little bit on the bottom there, but you know, if we get, we get snow, we'll kind of be able to, it could be a little too tight. So we'll work on finalizing that, but it is at least wrapped for this matter.
Okay, any questions? Okay, engineer report.
Uh, so with, uh, Woodning Current, they've got a few things going. Uh, did include, um, from almost a month ago now, what they had submitted to us for November, um, we're in November. So the, since then, I'll just emphasize the, the garage, uh, public works facility update. Um, I did, uh, yesterday, we got some number, or more fine tuned numbers with work products or plans, uh, from the Sheridan company. So, um, I did give you a copy of that, hard copy of that, um, and I can send an email out as well, if you want to look at it virtually or digitally. Um, so the, what they, after the site visit, uh, went back, talked to the subs, got a better idea of all, all that needed to be done. Um, when they, we signed a contract, if you will, with a Murblier, which are estimated at eight hundred and fifty thousand to do the work on it. Um, after the site visit, the numbers came back and they're at seven eighty-nine right now. Um, we're just over seven eighty-nine, you know, so it's about a sixty thousand dollar difference from what they estimated it might be after seeing it. So, uh, with that, there is a list of, uh, the things that are going to be done in that packet. Uh, so review that, we can take it up at the next meeting, uh, in between now and then. Uh, if the board is, uh, still feeling confident to move forward, they'd like kind of a green light to secure housing. And they do have a few places out here that they're talking with, uh, property owners on and they're getting pressure to make commitments sooner rather than later. Um, so you know how quick those things can disappear, so that's something you can green light, um, all of them know.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah. This is actually a requirement for a motion to go ahead, you know, get out here.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think with that, they're expecting to start, um, depending on when a final number, um, if you want to review that, we meet next. Um, they think they could, within three to four weeks of that, uh, that go ahead, they'd be able to start working. Um, so they're looking at mid, mid-January to be able to be out here. And they think after seeing it, instead of four months, they think it might only take three months, according to all weather dependence and whatnot, so.
Great, great. Get the show on the road. Didn't think it was ever gonna happen. Okay, old business, Knox County Sheriff, twenty twenty-one contract.
Uh, so they, uh, Knox County has, uh, has sent this back after the lawyers. We know they were, we're waiting for them to go back through it and review it again. Um, there is, uh, a few changes or strike crews in here. Um, I did have an opportunity to talk with the sheriff about it, uh, last week, late last week. And, um, just expect some of the things that jumped out at me, and I highlighted those, um, in my report to you. Um, and the ones that I thought that jumped out were the, the communities were, you know, desire to see seven nights a week of coverage out here. Um, currently, there is, just this past week, a resident deputy that, if you will, that started. Um, you know, so there's four, actually four days, um, where someone's on duty, um, in the evenings, so that leaves another three nights. So the contract does call for the forty hours and it does specify the aspiration to see eighty hours. Um, but it would be another contract essentially once someone's found. Um, so we have another one or a modified one at that point, is how it's currently written. Uh, the housing allowance that's in there, um, it's worded to have an allowance and the numbers that are in there would be an increase from thirteen thousand five hundred to seventeen thousand a year, um, as it's presented. Um, and it has the town, and Tim, you might have to help me on this one. We, I brought up the, the seventy-five dollar a day stipend that's in there. We talked about that last winter, about a year ago. Um, so when the deputy spends the night, um, it would be seventy-five dollars for that shift. Um, so the contract, as it was presented back to us, called for us to pay a hundred percent of that. Um, I think, you know, between the sheriff and I, I think we were on a different page after we talked. Um, and that basically, I thought we'd be splitting that and to clarify that the seventy-five dollars a day was only for, um, a deputy who spent the night, not for the resident deputy, because that's part of the housing allowance, we're getting anyway. So, um, we're gonna stand up to try and get deputies to come and fill in spaces or fill in, you know, the schedule there. Um, on a, I thought on a positive note, the county was, is willing to take on the replacement of the vehicle in that contract. Um, there's some things in there that I'm hoping to get to the points of accountability and what I think the board and the community were looking at for communicating backward, you know, both ways. Um, and um, it continued for fifty-fifty cost share for the first forty hours. And in this contract, it'd still be fifty-fifty. When a second deputy comes on, that would be another discussion, but likely, you know, we'd be paying it, um, I believe, a hundred percent of that one. Um, so we had talked about. And then, uh, I think you all know, but the sheriff's office did buy a boat that is for thoroughfare or people who will go a little bit further, but primarily for the thoroughfare. So those are the ones that I, I think I pulled out and noted that were substantial. There were a couple of minor edits since he and I talked, you know, like the housing, I talked about the county would, you know, invoice us for housing costs. Um, so we're either, we're usually the ones paying or the deputy's the one that takes it on and we just, you know, pay it to them or the landlord. So we cut that part out. Other than that, I don't think there were any other changes.
Sheriff, you guys, like commissioners had a meeting today, I believe. I was on that for a little bit. Um, I don't know if you had anything more you wanted to add or if the board had questions for, for you or us?
Um, if, I'll just, I'll just kind of add my piece into it and then absolutely I'll take on any, any questions. Um, my desire to get, at least to get a contract in place is really the desire. We've been kind of running without one for the good part of the year, you know, in all aspects. We had it extended for six months and three months and back and forth, but I wanted to get a contract in place that at least identified having the one deputy out there. Um, as you all know, it's been a challenge trying to get a resident deputy out there. I think you will be happy with Chad Abbott. He's the, the new deputy, the new resident deputy on Vinyl Haven. He's coming, he's got twenty-five years law enforcement experience. Um, he was a police sergeant just prior to coming here and prior to that, he was a game warden for many years. So, you know, obviously capable of working alone, um, many years of experience. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, he's gonna serve the county well, uh, the, the town of Vinyl Haven well. That, uh, you know, he's gonna be some of that part of that community policing that, uh, the island, um, is desiring, which I absolutely agree that, um, I think he's got the capability of doing that, being, uh, more integrated into the, into the community and being that resource for law enforcement. I do wish to, I did, like I said, I want to get this contract in place to get a forty hour person out there, just to, to get something out there solidified. I do still have hopes and plans to look at that eighty hours of having two deputies out there. I've approached it in a couple of different ways of, as you all know, some of the, the complaints of the deputy that's there in the past has been, when you're out there, you're always on, you really don't get any downtime. So a, a approach that I'm taking is two deputies, um, but it's on there, they alternate weeks, but when they're out there, they're basically on, well, it'd be about eleven hours of the day, they'd be getting, but you'd be getting eighty hours of service every week. Um, you know, daytime and nighttime, uh, scheduling. So you would have a law enforcement officer on duty pretty, seven days a week, um, varying the times of day and night coverage. Um, I'm still looking to do that. I want to do that, and I think that's probably the best service to the island. But I just, like I said, I want to get this one in place for now, and then when we get to that next step of, at this point, honestly, it'd be after the first of the year of recruiting somebody to be that other deputy. Obviously, it, the two deputies, you know, it would be a partnership really in how we make that work that best benefits the town. Is what we'd be looking for, but that would be in communication with you as the select board as to moving forward with that and how we can, how we can make that all, all happen. You know, for the, the most feasible way to do it is, as well as making sure that you get the coverage that you want. We did take on a few things, you know, it was one contract, one island contract, we provide the car. Vinyl Haven for a number of years, you provided the car. I thought it only made sense that, you know, it's, you know, if it's good for one island, it's good for the other, that we should take on that, um, that burden in itself. Working out some of the, the, the routine maintenance of things, um, if you could take care of that. And also sharing the cost of, and, you know, recognizing the increased cost of flying, which obviously we do only on a really as needed emergency basis, but sharing the cost of the transportation to and from the island, especially regarding when arrests are made or, or the necessity of getting deputies out there. So, um, it just, I thought it just made sense. It may seem to be fair, more fair, I feel, um, between the county and the town and, and working together. So, um, I'll take on any questions, but I will say, I've talked with Andy quite a bit and, um, I really appreciate the conversations we've had, the discussions we've had, um, really trying to provide the best service that we can. And I, I, it's been a rough year, absolutely. I, I agree with that. I, um, and hopefully, I think like everybody, twenty twenty-one's gonna be a better year all the way around. So, um, I think we're all hoping for that, but, um, I will field any, any questions, anybody has?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Not really.
No?
I, I do like the fact that, um, perhaps they will be enforcing our local ordinances. That's a plus.
Yes.
Sorry, it's like the fireworks and the complaints we have about that, then, oh, I'm happy to see that.
You still gotta stand there. Phil?
Yeah, why does, why does the contract say that they may enforce local ordinances? Why would that not be incumbent upon them?
Uh, it's, I guess, I would say it's more lawyer speak that we may, because we don't do that in many of the other town, or the two islands are the only two that we enforce local ordinances.
Really?
Yeah, it's something, it's just for a law enforcement officer to en- enforce all the ordinances, because as you know, every town has different ordinances, to be able to keep up on that and do that, that's just something that unless it's a contract, we don't do that in the other towns. It's just North Haven and Vinyl Haven are the only two that we enforce local ordinances. And it's only because it just makes sense, you know, in my mind, it just makes sense for us to also do that on. It is the island deputy, he's assigned to that town, that, um, he can be that resource to enforce the ordinances. But we don't do it on any of the mainland towns.
And so, does that mean that we can count on you doing it on Vinyl Haven and North Haven? Or is it subject to the deputy's discretion?
No, we can, it's part, it's in here, I'd look at it, it's part of the contract that we will enforce the local ordinances of the town as well.
Well, the, the, the contract doesn't say you will, it says you may. Unless I misread something.
No, you're right. It says services provided may include patrolling the town. And I, Andy and I talked about this a little bit. I think it's more of it, you know, just like call, responding to, it may, I mean, if you read all the language, we may respond to the citizens' calls for assistance. Well, obviously we will. We may enforce statutes of, obviously we will, so I'm not sure those are the legal language of that. I think the ordinance part is in there, um, that we, you know, I take it as we will and I'm, I'm, can assure you, I'm telling you now that we will enforce the local ordinances of Vinyl Haven.
Okay, good enough for me. Um, I also want to say, as I've communicated to the sheriff over the last couple of weeks, that, uh, Josh Lemoine, the deputy in North Haven, has really set the bar high for community involvement and for, uh, law enforcement, really, really an impressive young fellow. And I hope that he will serve as a, an example for the fellows coming to Vinyl Haven. That would be really, that would be terrific.
Uh, Phil, and just so you know, I have, I talked to Josh today. He happened to bring somebody over today. And I expressed your thoughts that you, that you said to me, uh, to him, so he knows that. But I do know that he is going to be working with Chad in the next couple of weeks, just for the familiarization and, and, uh, I agree. Hopefully some of that rubs off. I don't think too much needs to rub off. I think you'll be happy with Chad. I really do.
Good, I'm very encouraged. Thank you.
Does anybody else have?
Any thoughts on the, the housing?
Well, it's, it's an allowance, so it's not guaranteed to be paid. That's just what I have there.
That's the cap. We're just increasing the cap. Um, if that's how, some, I don't know if I've worded it that way, uh, we shall provide a housing allowance. I mean, we'll provide taller housing allowance, it's not.
So we're gonna be paying a thousand dollars a month if they find something that's out of fifty, they'll argue fifty?
Um, a thousand bucks a month plus the, up to, uh, the five thousand for the utilities. So the way it's worded, the way I see it, is the town shall provide housing allowance that includes that full amount there. Housing payments will be capped at twelve hundred a month, or twelve thousand per year, rather. Um, the heating, electricity costs will be capped at the five thousand per year.
The two separate buckets, but the most we could pay and max on both is seventy, which is an increase of what, so they thirty, they would provide us with their bills and then we pay up to that amount, right?
There's a move, yeah.
If the rent is less, I'm sorry to interrupt, if it's less than that, then it's, it's whatever the monthly payment. If you find somebody, you know, you find, find something for five hundred bucks a month for a rent, that'd be great, and that's what you pay for rent. I think capped is that most, is the way I read it, the way I understand it.
That's what I would, I don't have a problem with it, I mean.
Yeah, and it's also, so I do know in one former landlord tenant agreement that we have like this, the landlord asked, what, what's the maximum yearly allowance? And he, that's the rest, he, he, you know, he, yeah, I mean, he did exactly what he should do, but, so I have a feeling that's what the cap is. We're gonna be paying off the cost to it.
But, yeah, we're not gonna get much lower than that.
Well, I don't know, uh. Gee, man. Yeah, man, I don't know, a thousand dollars a month is a quite a, quite a rent. You're living in.
I was gonna say, that's what I was saying last time I was renting that area.
Oh, wow. Wow, okay, okay. I guess it is what it is.
Sheriff, were there any other, um, what, that the commissioners were generally okay with things?
Yes, they were. They were, um, that one commissioner, just because we, because it was expressed that I was having the meeting tonight or was attending the meeting tonight with you. And they, they approved it based on if there was any major substance change that it would have to go back to the commissioners. If there isn't anything major as far as, then we can go forward with how it's presented. Uh, there was one commissioner that just had a concern that they were approving a, a contract that may change tonight. But, um, we got past that. They unanimously approved it as presented. And from here, if, if you're, if you're okay with the language, and I'm not trying to rush anything, obviously you'll get a cleaner version and we'll be, get the original signatures and all that stuff going forward.
I, I move we approve this contract with Knox County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And let the record show, Phil is raising the right hand. Yay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
I do plan on, uh, getting out there as soon as we get through this thing. I've expressed to Andy, I had my knee replaced in October, so I haven't been really going too far. Um, but I do plan on making some more of an appearance out there. Um, I tried to do it more this summer and recognizing that I think it needs to happen. And again, I know this has been a troubled year for many, many reasons and, and a bunch of different things going on. And hopefully that twenty twenty-one is, treats us all better. And, um, you know, I, I hope that the relationship between the sheriff's office and the, the town of Vinyl Haven, uh, we regain some of that trust. I know we lost some. I, I absolutely admit that. I know we lost some trust. And my efforts are to, this year, with the right person, with the right people, that we regain the trust, um, that we have with the sheriff, that you have with the sheriff's office and, uh, we go forward from here. So thank you and I, I appreciate working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and speed your recovery.
Thank you.
Okay, it's going to new business, foreclosed property.
Um, so we do have a, a piece of property that, for, we put automatic foreclosure, that, whether that went out last winter, uh, I think it was early February. Um, it wasn't paid, that was foreclosed. There were a couple others, um, since then, they had paid. Uh, this is the only one remaining. Um, I did send a limo letter in September, um, didn't get a response and it wasn't returned, just undeliverable letter. Um.
It was returned under.
It wasn't. Um, so it was, you can see, I mean, payments were made right up until the twenty eighteen tax year. Um, you know, Darlene and I tried, you know, she does a lot of research whenever properties on the lien list or foreclosure list, uh, look with the county, our county here, um, if you can't find information here, she does try to fix on the address we have, try to look elsewhere in those places where they live. Um, this could be potentially a case where we may not be assessing to the right owner and that this could be a pair of people that may have passed. Um, this happened a few years ago on another property we had, and so we just have to reassess it to the right owner for the one, because it, the state closes and it passes through approbate kind of period. I'm not saying that this is what happened here, but we're just, um, not a hundred percent confident that it's not. Um, and so it's a matter of what do you want to do with it? Uh, do you want us to keep, keep down that road of trying to see if that, if that is the case? Um, or do you want to see that property?
Where does the legal burden fall? I mean, I mean, if they're, if it's on their will or whatever, that, that keeps them looking to it and we foreclose and send letters to the last owner's address, shouldn't it, shouldn't the burden fall on them to follow up and do what? I mean, it's not like we can have it.
It should in all.
I mean, I just don't know where our legal burden is at.
It shouldn't, it generally doesn't. In the case where it goes, you know, a property might go through like approbate process, if you will. Again, only speaking from the experience we had with previously with another property like this. And a lawyer in that case just forgot to file or didn't file it, didn't realize it didn't get filed. And then once we, once we found out that there was a different owner of record, we had to then go back and reassess those three years as like a one, one tax year payment kind of thing. Um, and then, you know, like it was still owed to us, just kind of reset that, that foreclosure period clock. Um, so I mean, I, for me, I'd recommend that we just look in that a little bit further to see before we make any decisions on releasing it or selling it or however we want to treat that.
I would, yeah, I agree with you, but we should try to do that, you know, let's not prolong it and longer than necessary, especially you know, if there is somebody else interested in the property, regardless of what our decision is there, at least be able to give them an answer somewhat timely. So, you know, just figure it out, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like they have long enough reviews, you think maybe.
Yeah.
Like, if they, if they were deceased and they had children, you would think that they would.
Nobody would know. Somebody might know that they now own a piece of property somewhere. And if they don't know, maybe they just don't care if they have a piece of property somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's not like we foreclose after one year. That's kind of.
Okay, fire alarm upgrade.
Uh, so this was, uh, triggered by, uh, the submissions we had at the library. Um, and looking at the system, I mean, we know there are, um, these radio communicator or transmitted systems. We don't currently have those. Our, it's go through the fax line to the phone line. Um, we have them three different buildings. Um, so they, in working on the one of the library, um, acknowledge this has been an issue on and off for the last few years. It's a phone company problem, it's a security company problem. So we had them looking and just asking, well, what's the cost to upgrade, because they are, you know, a little older. Uh, but what's the cost to upgrade, um, to these radio systems? And so for all three buildings, um, the town office, the fire department, the library, if we wanted to upgrade or change out those fire alarm systems to be radio, you know, communicators, it'd be, uh, thirty-six hundred bucks, just over thirty-six hundred dollars, uh, to do that for all three buildings. it'd be, uh, thirty-six hundred bucks, just over thirty-six hundred dollars, uh, to do that for all three buildings.
What account would this come from? Just going those?
Uh, we'd be able to take it from the operating, um, expenses for each of those buildings. At twelve hundred a piece, it's nothing that we can, we can do with each of those budgets.
Don't see it. What was the monthly rate? Before, it's gonna be thirty-four dollars per month for a location. What is it in the phone line?
Uh, I think the phone lines are like thirty-three bucks or just about the same price per month for the phone line. So if we can eliminate a phone line, um, it's just like, you know, passing, just pass it from one to the other. There's no change in cost in that sense.
Well, if it's more reliable, I'd say that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark recommends we do consider this because again, it is a more upgraded, updated and reliable system to do this.
I, I agree.
You say Mark recommends?
Yes. Okay, I move approval of this proposal.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Phil is raising the right hand. Server hardware upgrade.
All right, so the server, the, the migration from the old to the new is, uh, wrapping up. Um, and the tax company is pointing out that their, um, they would highly recommend that we look to install some firewall and protection on the server. It's one that the old one never had. Um, so, um, we were honestly a little surprised to see how low they were, um, these costs to get the hardware, um, to have this done. So now, we don't think it's really an option for us, which is a matter of needing to know what the cost was so we could see if we could do it in this year's budget. And at that, at that cost, I feel confident we can.
So is it the fourteen, thirteen, and the twelve, maybe those are the two?
I understand that you have to use both of those together.
Those points I want to run, the upgrade and everything.
I, yeah. I think we.
We can figure, we can get rancid for more than that.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening in some of the bigger cities, but also smaller towns are also getting either compromised and, um, the cost for the ransom is, you know, it's, it's quite admirable for someone to take it.
Oh, yeah. I move we approve the contract with W G TAP or they agree with W G TAP.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. Any discussion? All of the paper. Okay, assistance to firefighters grant request.
Uh, there's, there's a possibility that, um, a regional, uh, grant, um, submitted to some of the Knox County, or some of the Knox County Fire Departments. Uh, Mark's put some other numbers together. You might recall the last couple of years, he talked about upgrading our radios to a digital form. Um, a couple of the county was anticipating having to do, you know, within the next five years and slowly we've been upgrading some of the pagers and and we've got a couple of the radios already. Um, but this is an opportunity to buy a, a larger quantity and to pay potentially uh, ninety or maybe ninety-five percent of the cost to do that. Uh, so it's kind of a no brainer, but they do need a letter of support from the board. Um, or on behalf of the town, um, saying that we're, we're willing to go in on this purchase if awarded. Um, so we'd be able to replace all of them. Um, Mark shows there. Each one's about five hundred bucks. Um. You can see there with the cost for the, for both departments, fire and EMS combined would be the, uh, about twenty-two hundred, just over twenty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred dollars rather, um, as opposed to twenty-nine thousand. Um, so it's really a no brainer. It's a matter of your kind of blessing to apply for the grant and be committed, commit paying that, that if we get awarded.
So we, we wouldn't be paying if we didn't get awarded, or would we then be facing, paying the full twenty-nine thousand?
No, so, yeah, no, we're just putting in for the grant. So if awarded, we can then purchase. I mean, at some point in the next five years, we're preparing to buy them. So um, instead of buying a couple a year, three or four a year, we can potentially get them all for the cost of four or five.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, so it's just a matter of a formality for your approval to do it.
Yep, I move that we authorize, um, the fire department and the ambulance service to enter the grant opportunity and also commit the two thousand, two thousand seventy-nine dollars for the fire department and one thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars for EMS. To be taken out of each department reserve.
Second.
Seconded by Donna Poole. Any discussion? All those in favor? And thank you, Mark, for finding that.
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's just Phil's on the yes, I hope.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, good. Okay, ambulance bill settlement request.
I'm sharing this with you. I don't have anywhere written or in policy that says I can speak on behalf, I mean, where it comes from a lawyer's office. Uh, what it is, is there is a, a, a case that's ongoing. We're not a named party. We sent an ambulance bill to someone who has utilized the service. Part of the settlement is to finalize costs and figure out, you know, who's paying for what. Um, it was being requested that we consider lowering the amount to eight eighty-five that was billed to the five ninety, acknowledging, uh, reflecting the appropriated legal fees. Um, I did, you know, ask the bill, it, it, you see where it was addressed to us, but it's called the billing company. And so I did ask to clarify. Sometimes it's kind of similar to what we get from insurance companies. Sometimes they ask us to negotiate a price or uh, agree to adjust the, the price due. Um, we usually say no to those. Um, this one, I where it's coming from, I assume that we just need to have you guys approve this, um, to just bring it to you. Um, if in the future we wanted to revisit our billing policy, collection policy, the, you know, give authorization one way or the other, we do get denials a lot. We do get requests for, from, from companies to adjust the rate. Um, but for this, in this case, if you wanted to provide an answer one way or the other, I can let them know. So it's either to lower, allow, or agree on a lower amount or or to keep it at the eight eighty-five.
I would say we keep it at the eight eighty-five.
What did the, uh, C C people say that they do?
In, in a case like this, they would recommend, I mean, we don't run our service at a profit. Um, if anything, our rates are probably one of the lowest in the, in the area. Um, you know, being a town service, we aren't trying to run at a profit. But that being said, we also don't run, you know, the ability to run with a thirty percent law and keep things going, um, the way, the way it does. So, um, she definitely said that deny this request, um, and try and get the full amount.
Sounds good today.
I understand why you pay a lawyer to get not even three hundred, or about three hundred dollars knocked off your bill like that.
This is, this is just one part of, um.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Uh, do you actually need a motion to deny this request?
I would. I don't have anywhere else in the following.
Okay, I, I move we deny the request.
Second.
Seconded by Donna Poole. Any discussion? All of us in favor? Okay, report from town manager.
Uh, most of the stuff I provided you, we've already covered. I have, um, I did add, um, so I've had two requests in the last week. Um, it's come up before. Um, seems to be a shortage of place to take cars after they've been in an accident, um, or, or what have you. Um, they can't, we don't accept them at the dump unless there's a title, because the company that we then send them to requires a title in order to dump them. Um, in that meantime, cars might, uh, continue to lie on someone else's property and then it seems to be no means for the property owner to see it moved. Um, unless they call the mainland tow company for them to impound it, um, the, the means that were available, you know, before the summer are, I guess, aren't available out here anymore. Um, I don't know if you feel that this is something, a role that the town should play in, you know, should we have a place we can impound cars basically, um, or not? So just kind of bringing that there, if you wanted me to look into that or not.
Some of that will be running off a lot of light work.
Well, I don't think it's tow them to whatever site it is that they own or root for or what.
Yeah.
And so they can square it up to get it taken to the mainland if, if the case, I mean.
Or up until a title is procured, then they could, then they can be disposed of at the dump and we can coordinate getting it off, but in the meantime.
Why is it our problem if someone has a junk car?
Right.
I mean, it shouldn't be the town's problem, it should be the, the owner of the vehicle.
I mean, I can see it costing a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and just, well, had, had it in one of us back. Yeah, I, no.
Okay.
I mean, unless we charge them twenty-nine all the day, you could say it helps them.
Well, I mean, I would recommend there would be a fee if we were to do it. I mean, my understanding of it, and I haven't looked too far, I knew it would be, we'd have to provide a a secure area for these other people's properties. So I mean, the dump is the closest we have with fencing and with cameras. Um, there's not a lot of space up there. Um, other than that, we'd have to kind of create a place to do this, um, storm, then we would then seek the ownership, they would pay a fee for the, to have it there. Um, either paid by the people dropping it off or, um, you hope to get it back if someone claims the vehicle.
Right.
That would.
I think let's stay away from that up in the facility and, uh.
Yeah, let's, let's stay away from it for the time being.
Okay. Uh, the, the attorneys did file their, our response, or a response on behalf of the town in the Hurricane Island Foundations Tax Exemption case with the Superior Court. Uh, my understanding is it is just waiting for the judge now at this point to decide if uh, further action or decisions to be made on that. Um, it's over a year now, um, on that one. And workforce housing, um, so with this, looking at, um, some of the challenges and some of the reasons why costs for capital projects are so high out here. Um, and there's so much of the public works facility now, the the bridge project will also be taking place late winter and into the spring. I'm still finalizing, you know, schedule on that. Um, but it's presenting to be a significant challenge to find places, uh, which makes projects last longer or finds companies uninterested. Um, because it's just one more thing that they've got to try and coordinate and deal with on being on the island. Um, and just looking at the public works garage alone and that estimated timeline of sixteen weeks when they submitted the first set of paperwork. Um, I kind of ran with those numbers and I looked at, what if they came back and forth on the ferry boat every day? What if they flew back and forth every day? What if they rented a house or if they stayed? Um, at a hotel and paid a nightly rate. Um, you know, and looked at that and the difference between renting a few places to put the crews in and a monthly rental cost versus the cost of sending them back and forth every day on the ferry boat, for example, which we know is not a viable solution if projects are going to be done on a known, known timeframe.
They have to leave at three fifteen.
Um, it's a much shorter workday. Um, you know, so just in, in the cost to have a, a worker sitting on a ferry boat, potentially three hours a day, um, I didn't factor in what that value was, what the extra cost was, the cost savings might be if your project was going to be sixteen weeks, assuming eight, ten hour workdays, and now you're only working six hour workdays. So it was just looking at the cost to transport people and pay the employees to be there. Um, it was about at least a sixty thousand dollar savings by renting a house. Um, now, because those are sometimes hard to come by, we have a lot of capital projects coming up in the future. Um, the Main Street project won't be a sixteen week project. Um, we've got a lot of paving we've got to do throughout the next few years, work improvements. Um, all that being said, it just, you know, kind of begs the question, where do we, do we want to play a role in trying to facilitate or coordinate housing for these short-term capital projects to try and guarantee that it's not one more thing to worry about. We can secure it. We have it available. We can keep the cost of these projects lower. I mean, you can potentially save sixty grand and get it done in the timeframe they thought it was going to be. I assume that's worth it to us in this community to try and keep those project costs low. It's just what's the upfront list to try and create this opportunity for housing. Um, don't have the answer, but, um, do you think it's something we, you guys should be thinking of and have us or someone directed to try and find the solution?
I think it's worth, yeah, I think it's worth.
We're not suggesting that, um, buy a place to rent out?
We either, yeah, we could either buy a place, build a place, you know, work with a, a property owner out here who has a place big enough that could potentially be converted into some sort of communal type housing, warm type housing. Um, you know, you look at, I think some, some places have been created with the project costs, has, there's housing costs associated with most of your projects. And, you know, could that cost of the housing be they bring something with them? A, a, a small tiny house or something with them, a modular home, to be in during the timeframe after the project's done that stays on the island potentially and could be sold or used in other ways, uh, either for affordable housing. I think there's some interesting things we can consider doing. Um, if we've got a five to seven year window with significant capital projects, don't want housing to own house, the town of Vinyl Haven, as a government, doesn't want to own the houses, potentially five to seven years down the road, a solution could be to make them available for purchase for year-round, year-round residence or something like that. That's far down the road, but I think there's some creative solutions that we could come up with that would solve a few different issues.
Top one.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's worth exploring, but my gut tells me to be wary of purchasing property.
Well, like when I read it, I was thinking that you had some place that was some summer residence that was going to be here from, you know, for like four months and they'd be willing to let us have the homes for the other eight months, you know, every year, like we could sign like some kind of a contract to get like a lower rate. And then that could be the place that they stay, you know, in the winters. What, where I read it with the, well, you know.
Well, the issue with that though, and obviously if we're going to have crews out here running in the spring and summer months, you're not going to be able to have a, a housing. So if we do, as a town, have a property that we can put people up in year-round, that would be obviously better, but I mean, that is a, that is a solution too, as you said, that probably more ways we can go about it. But yeah, it seems we might need to, as a town, think about that more seriously because not only with all the projects coming up, but if we're going to try to provide affordable housing as a town, that might be one of the labs get to go to. Phil's got a, you know.
Phil?
Yeah, I will, well, let's move forward with looking at alternatives, because I think it definitely makes sense, given the repetitive occasions where we find ourselves looking for housing, uh, to try and find a property that would serve that purpose for the town in perpetuity, not just year by year or happenstance by happenstance. I think we should move forward with looking at that very carefully.
Great. Um, do have the, um, budget process with the departments kicking off, um, just as they're starting to go through their goals worksheets, um, as, as we normally do. Um, and then in January, we'll start reviewing costs and, um, doing some of the figures together. Um, but with that, I did want to bring up the strategic plan again. Um, and I don't know if, if y'all had a chance to look at that again. Um, if there's any substantial, um, changes or updates, um, you know, I had a couple, um, department has kind of the feedback there saying, you know, well, shouldn't the board be telling us what, what, what the goals are for us to do? And, but this document is kind of, I'm trying to get it to a point where this document, all their goals and most of their goals, when you raise tie back to this, we can see exactly what we're trying to accomplish. We are working towards these goals here. So the community sees that, departments see that. We just work towards the same things. Um, so with that, I just wanted an opportunity for you guys to quickly revisit that again, the work you did last winter on creating this. Um, as long as, you know, things are still on track with those generally, um, you know, put more workshops or modify it, but just those things that you're thinking of that are big items or big programs, things that have changed because of COVID and what we've seen this year, or you know, things like you want to see committees continue doing that aren't on here, just would be helpful to know.
I think we, I feel like we left a pretty good spot.
I agree, I don't think.
I mean.
I don't, I don't see any major overhauls of what we have out there.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it's changed.
The only thing that might have changed would be the timeline.
Right. But I mean, if we went through it again, I don't think we'd be adding or subtracting too much.
No, it would be minimal.
Really changing some wording. Yeah, I, I think we've left a pretty good spot.
I would say that's not be a dead horse.
Yes, my, my hope is that this year, we, we're beginning to try and create this, something Matt's worth helping us work on is, you know, kind of creating these K P I's or these measurables that you tie back to these, these things that you've identified, want to see done. So then we can show you how, how it's progressing. We can show the community how we're working towards it. If there was a cost associated with, we can share that. Um, but trying to tie this all back together to this one kind of very condensed vision of what we kind of created and want to see completed. Um, and try and stay focused on those things, because, you know, again, I kept seeing us kind of scatter and pull one way and keep going the other way. So this hopefully will kind of give us a, the traction, continue to move forward on these things, um, and, and tie it back to it.
Report members. I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if we've covered this, this, a letter from the, um.
That, under foreclosed property, that was.
That's what I want to get.
I have, I have a, a question about, look, when is the ferry going to come back on? The big ferry?
Uh, I, I heard from someone at the. Uh, I, I heard from someone at the co-op and they said that with the, with the Curtis being on, their trucking company has to go and rent a truck that's shorter to get on this boat and is causing some logistical nightmare and wondering why our ferry boat is getting taken to Islesborough where there's three hundred people in the winter to a place that's fifteen hundred. I mean, they cost, they have a trip every hour. I just don't understand why they get so much better treatment than we here.
That's a very good question.
Do we, do we? How long are we out of retaining it too? Can we, can we sue them for, you know, us losing out on fifteen cars a day? I mean, they, they sued for losing, I don't know what, ten dollars a trip? Or they weren't even losing trips. I mean, we're losing actual production on the island here. I mean, it just doesn't seem like, that is our ferry, the Curtis is the spare ferry. When their ferry has to go off, they get the spare ferry. That's how it should work. It shouldn't be you take someone else's ferry, especially in the winter, when we have a rougher trip than they do. And the, and that whole debate for rougher conditions is just this whole safety bullshit that they had with us with the lights a couple of years ago, they haven't addressed any of those conditions. It's just really the ferry service, we should, we need to do something about the ferry service. I don't know exactly what it is, but in my mind, it's get our lawyers working on some kind of a, I don't know, a prejudicial lawsuit versus vinyl heave. I don't exactly know how you go about it, but it seems like we are always there with the boy.
Yes, I would completely agree with you. I didn't even know that's why the Thompson was off.
Oh, yeah.
It's up in Islesborough.
I heard of.
For their twenty minute trip, like.
And I know, and I know that in, in the winter, in the summer, when the last trip leaves, if they leave pride over there in the summer, when there's twice much, they have enough time that they go back over with the ferry, pick them up because it's so quick around.
Yeah.
So I don't understand this time of year, they need such a big boat that, I mean, it's causing headaches for business people on the island and, I mean, island people and.
Want to go off.
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. I had the very boat headache. The co-op thing, it moved just recently about the trucks from the Rudy brothers and stuff. And that just doesn't seem like, I mean, so now they're trying to figure out, they have to pay more because there's trucks that they own can't get on the boat. I mean.
Yes.
And it just doesn't seem that at all.
Yeah. Yeah, and putting a month to do. We'll put the smaller boat on in the, when the weather is worse, you know, less daylight. Because like you said, the safety concerns, why did they cut our four thirty boat this time of year?
So now, so now they're cutting out trips, especially when we have a mechanical issue or something like the other day. We didn't have the Victor come clean them up, so people got stuck over there.
Right.
Um, it just.
Oh, God.
They better not come back to us and say that our, our, our income is too low that, that our tickets have to go up when they're the ones that are always causing us to lose money.
Right. And also, yeah, raising freight, which costs us more money in the summer, but, you know, on and on and on.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Well, I don't know, I don't know. Maybe that's something you can run by.
Yeah.
The lawyer or something, I mean, Islesborough, so it seems like they bend over backwards for those guys now.
Yeah, what else?
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, Phil's heard anything more through the advisory board, but I remember, you know, when Mark had reached out to me before the, the change was even made, and I did express the challenge it would pose on the freight. And, you know, did mention that, you know, if you run two trucks end to end, if, if some of the post require or call for a tariff, um, especially the smaller boat, you use at least four, if not six cars, I believe, every time that happens. And, you know, it's basically, you know, they were expecting it to be sometime December that it would, it would come back to chase. The Smith would come back into service for Islesborough, the Thompson would come back. I don't know if that's still on schedule or not. Um, did cite that the, they had a condensed schedule from COVID and they aren't earning their nine round trips. I think it's seven round trips now, um, to be able to space them out a little bit further for cleaning to happen in between runs. Just to. I think they've got a fifteen minute turnaround for every trip. And, and so these are just the things that were provided to us or to me at least from him. And I don't know if it was brought up further on the advisory board meeting or not, or if Phil, if you have a more updated version of when that boat went back.
I don't at this point, we're meeting again in a, a few weeks. But, uh, the protests against moving that ferry to Islesborough fell on deaf ears. And it's, it's enormously frustrating. I certainly understand and sympathize. And I wish that, uh, it were a more responsive management, but right now it's not. And, uh, for that matter, I wish there was some, I wish there was somebody on there representing vinyl even could do more than I do. But, uh, that's the way it stands right now.
And it's not.
I'll see if I can find out more tomorrow about the particulars.
Doesn't help with going on and being affected today, but, you know, hopefully with the fear coming on this spring, if that also still stays on.
The rain court in the plan.
Bring the, bring the twenty fifth in.
This spring, this coming spring. Um, you know, hopefully that'll, you know, it'll be another bigger boat, at least in, in the reserve or not reach the smallest one. But hopefully that helps a little bit, but it doesn't address the issues that Jake, I didn't hear about the freight. They're running another vehicle just to accommodate the boat. I think that's what's bringing up the ferry service.
I think they should set those extra bills on their alcohol and then they will.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, too, like Jake said, the Curtis is the spare boat.
Exactly.
And they never ever take the North Haven and go up to bed, they scream like hell when they have.
Oh, yeah.
They have a spare boat.
So we fix it right there.
So we, you know, they really do put it to us in that respect.
Yeah. I just said one, one more thing, and it's about the school road, the tree that's on that on Renee's property and that. Thank you, Jake. Saved me from bringing it up.
Okay.
Good. It's been combined substantially, is that still a problem?
Well, I mean, it's pretty much sad and it's that road's so narrow when you've got people coming, you know, side by side. It's just, it sticks out. I mean, it's kind of a dead tree. There isn't any way that we can just take it down or, you know, ask her if we could take it down and buy her, you know, a new, you know, number tree, couple hundred dollar tree to put somewhere back a little bit. I mean, I know Renee's on the school board, it's her tree, but it's right on the, I mean, uh, that's combined, so. And obviously Eric has too.
I, I imagine I got the same person you did.
Yeah, but I brought it up, so I mean, that, is that a town road? Is that something, I mean, we have a certain setback, right?
Yeah, I mean, every road generally has a, either an assumed or a, a map right away. Um, I don't know what that one is exactly through there, obviously there's not much room on the side where you hit, um, front doorsteps. Um, I believe going in there, at least a certain length, it is a town road, at least to a certain length. It's not all the way around the circle, I can't remember exactly, but.
But I mean, if you're hitting your mirrors and stuff, couldn't you go by a tree? That seems like it's something that should be.
It is awful.
I haven't seen it, maybe it's been trimmed back and I, I don't, I don't know what, when it was trimmed back.
It was, I think, within the last two months, I don't know.
It must not be, it must not be an issue then, because I just heard this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't trim the trunk.
Right, that's the thing, it's so close, like, and it's not really a very, if it was like a really pretty huge oak tree or something, I could see, you know, trying to save it, but it's a pretty staggering looking kind of, that apple tree or whatever it is. I mean, maybe the way that we could ask her if we could take it down and just put a new one like over, over between her house and like the school, so it, or something, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't want to just say cut it down, I'm just saying like, maybe that could be a compromise, we could buy her, you know, in front of a young, younger tree that can go somewhere not as close to the road as us. I mean, I don't know how that works, but.
Baby tree.
Okay. But I mean. Does anybody else, does anybody else want anything?
I don't.
Baby tree.
Okay, I move we adjourn. Seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much for attending, everybody, and good evening.